Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our monthly Mililani Malka and Launani neighborhood board. At this time, I officially call the meeting to order. Uh, my name is Keith Thomas Earl. No, I'm not Dean Hazama. Okay, they needed a second string, so somehow I got chosen, okay? Uh, we'll be facilitating the meeting today. As per the agenda, if at this time I can ask and I see everybody standing already, but if you are able to, to please stand. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the presentation of the colors and pledge of allegiance to Boy Scout troop six, six, four.
Attention, flag guard attention, flag guard forward march. Our time, march. Right wheel, march. Ready, halt. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Scouts salute our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready to. Flag guard, mark time, march. Forward, march. Our time, march. Ready, halt. Flag guard, left face. Forward, march.
Okay, thank you troop, uh, Boy Scout troop six, six, four, everyone, please take your seat at this time. Okay, great job. Okay, moving ahead on the agenda here, I'll go ahead and and cover meeting decorum. Uh, and under meeting decorum, just simply whether you're joining us in person or virtually online, uh, we just asked, um, because the intent here for the board is we want to hear your thoughts, your feedback, your suggestions, uh, issues, complaints. And in order to do that, we just asked that, uh, especially during resident concerns, um, if you would like to speak to, please, please raise your hand. I will then call you up to the microphone, um, and if you're joining us virtually, same thing, uh, Dylan will signal if you want to speak and then I'll turn the, uh, mic over to you. And the last is I just asked that if possible, to keep your, uh, comments to about three minutes if possible, so that we can again get everyone to, uh, who wants to contribute their share. Uh, that's meeting decorum. We're gonna go ahead and then jump into item number four of the agenda, which is our monthly reports. I'll go online. Uh, I see we have a representative for the Honolulu Fire Department.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Woods, uh, firefighter in Mililani Malka. This is.
I'm Leah Connie here at Mililani Malka as well. I'm gonna give you the reports for the previous month. So for August, we had one structured fire and four activated alarms with no fires involved in those alarms. And then as far as emergency, other emergencies go, we had thirty seven medical emergencies and then one motor vehicle collision. Um, and that would be as far as the numbers go. For our safety tips for this month, it's the evacuation planning. Main thing is in the event of an emergency, you want to make sure that we're, we're all prepared. We want to make sure that, uh, we create a plan for our families, uh, family members, where to go, where to meet, the safest place to exit the route out of the house. You also want to make sure you keep in mind the limited abilities, you know, everybody with any limited abilities, children, elderly. You also want to make sure, uh, we want to make sure that you assemble an emergency kit as well. Remember to pack important documents, medicines, any necessary pet items. And then if you need any more information, you can always visit our website at fire dot Honolulu dot gov.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Excellent, excellent report. First of all, turning to my fellow board members, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, seen none, uh, any from our audience that are present here today, any questions? Okay, going virtually, those joining us virtually, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, none. Okay, again, thank you very much for that report. You're so good, nobody had any questions. Okay. Turning to the Honolulu Police Department.
All right, aloha, good evening, everyone. Corporal Muna, District Two, Community Policing Team. Uh, for statistics, this, uh, month so far for September, there've been, uh, six burglaries, um, UEMVs on authori- oh. What nice unexpected visitors we have. Hi friends. We have, uh, the UEMVs, uh, which are unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, basically vehicle break-ins. They're actually really high right now. I don't know if they're on the rise, but nineteen so far this month. That was a, that was a nice treat. Um, the good news, the fortunate news though, is that, um, only three in Mililani. A lot of them are in North Shore, uh, but because the number is so high, I do want to go over some UEMV, uh, safety tips for this evening. Robbery, zero. Uh, assaults, three. I think out of the three, I think all three of them are school related, however. Uh, any other safety, or I'm sorry, any other, uh, statistics that you guys are curious about, please visit HonoluluPD.org. There is that statistic, uh, statistics link at the bottom, it'll take you to the crime mapping website. Um, if you want more specifics as far as where the burglaries were or any of those stats you're looking for, uh, that's where you'd find it. Uh, so for, um, safety tips for this month, please keep your vehicle locked at all times, even when driving. I know most vehicles, they kind of have the automatic lock nowadays. My old car still doesn't have it though. Um, uh, so even while driving, I know it's, uh, you don't really see it too much here, but, uh, in the mainland it does happen where you get to a stoplight and, um, some be bad people with bad intentions. Sometimes they do try and approach people who are stuck at a stoplight, so always keep your vehicle locked at all times, even while driving. Um, also, uh, again, luckily not too much over here, but you also see those videos where, uh, if you're done filling gas and you're gonna run in the convenience store, sometimes those people, they try and hide on the other side of the car. So when you run to the convenience store, they try and get into your car and either take it or take some stuff from it. Uh, never leave your vehicle running, even if it's, if it's in your driveway in front of your house, even if for a few short minutes, just unfortunately, we live in a world where you just want to take those chances. Um, never keep your spare keys or actual keys, uh, by the front door, back door at night. Please take them into the bedroom with you. Um, it's unfortunate, but sometimes with burglaries, we do get vehicles, uh, stolen as well. Um, I don't know if Android has, uh, something similar, but for Apple users, they make those air tags, those GPS, uh, air tags. Hey, throw one of those in your car, hide it somewhere. So hopefully your vehicle doesn't get stolen, but if it does, it make it a lot easier to track it, uh, immediately. Uh, park in wallet areas if you don't have a garage. Um, never leave anything visible in your car, even if you know nothing is in your bag. You'd be surprised, uh, some of the cases I have where, you know, the complainants thinking, I don't know why they took my bag, there's nothing of value in there, but they don't know that. They just see something there and, um, a vast majority of those nineteen UEMVs we have so far this month, the MO is the smash the window and grab, so just don't leave any, um, temptation for them. Um, keep your title in a safe place, don't keep it in your car. And then lastly, I'll wrap it up with, um, I think a lot of beachgoers have these, uh, you know, the locks that you hang from your, um, your bumper with the spare key inside. It doesn't happen a lot, but some criminals are very brazen and if they can bolt cut that, that lock off, they know a hundred percent pretty much there's a key inside there, so, uh, they'll have that access to your car. So try, try to find other means other than that little lock box that you hang from your car. And that's it. That's all I have. Uh, any questions?
Okay, Corporal, thank you very much for that, uh, update. Very, uh, detailed, very informative and, uh, very pertinent, uh. Yeah, and again, you got great concentration, the dogs are coming through, you kept focused.
No, that was nice.
I think even the dogs, they want to join this neighborhood board.
We got a good vibe over here tonight, all the way around.
Okay, turning first to my fellow board members, any questions, Teresa?
Um, there are just two questions that came up, um, recently from the community. Um, one was dogs who are off leash. Um, is that something that HPD would take care of, um, if it's like in a park, um, including like the state parks like Alamoana, it happens every Friday night. I know it's not our district, but I mean, things of that nature where, I mean, they literally are standing next to the sign that says no dogs. How do, how is that addressable, I guess, for the community?
No, that's a great comment. Um, uh, the first, uh, answer to the question would be, uh, leash law. Yes, there is a leash law, uh, and HPD does cite for that. Um, so if there ever is a situation where a dog is off the leash, um, uh, police could get called. Uh, the exception to that would be service, service animals, uh, they don't have to be off the leash, uh, on the leash. Um, but there are actually two violations in one, uh, according to what you mentioned too, as far as animals in the park, that's also a park rules, uh, violation. So, uh, if an animal even on the leash or in certain city and county parks, uh, one of those blue signs that you would see, animals is usually on there. Um, there are some parks I remember in Waikiki that are designated for dogs. Um, but if there is any kind of violation, whether it's leash law or animals in park, it's, uh, what we call an MOT tag, it's an automatic court date, there's no, uh, fine for that. So that's how we would, uh, enforce that.
Saw the wonderful HPD officers that are sitting in their patrol cars as all the dogs go walking past them. Priorities, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not too sure, I can't, I can't answer for that, but.
That was the question that came up, but then the other one is regarding vehicle safety inspections. Um, and this was something that happened recently here in Malka, um, where the driver was trying to turn left, because you can turn left at a stop sign or what have you. But there was a police officer in a subsidized personal vehicle that their front windshield tint was blacked out, all their whole entire, so you, they couldn't make eye contact. I'm gonna assume that subsidized vehicles for police officers are mandated to also have safety inspections.
Yes.
Which they would have to follow the same tin requirements that the rest of us have to follow.
Yes.
So how does it happen that they can continue to drive onto their facilities and it's obvious that, I mean, when I go to the substation here in Wauwaa, you can clearly see. Is that something that is addressable?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, safety checks are, are vehicle inspections. Not only do we need to, uh, adhere to the same laws, the traffic laws is, um, and, uh, vehicle inspections, like, I think it's with the, um, thirty seven percent, I can't remember what the ten is offhand, but yeah, no, you're absolutely right. So we all have to pass that, but we also have our annual inspections from, uh, PSO, basically Internal Affairs. So they come out, you know, they, they check us with the tint meter, everything like that as well. So if there ever is something that you see that you think is, uh, you know, obviously a clear violation, you can always address it with a supervisor at the station, uh, to try and get to the bottom of that. Um, but yeah, the quick answer to that is absolutely all of us, you know, tires, um, tint, um, things of that sort, uh, lifts, anything like that, we all have to abide by those traffic laws as well.
They were just, because they were turning and then they saw the car go forward and then they couldn't see the driver, so.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
I told them if they had the license date, just, you know, call one of the, you know, stations and.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. For anything like that. Okay. No, yeah, no, you're absolutely right. Any, for anything like that, any kind of, um, personnel complaint, anything like that, uh, everyone always has the right to try and call for, you know, call for a supervisor, get to the bottom of that. Absolutely.
Alice, Teresa, great questions. Hey, Alice.
Okay, bye. Um, I just have a quick one. Um, number one, uh, at Lani Kuhana in particular by Ruby Tuesday. And, um, I just had a brain fade, the one that's supposed to be the freeway. That's a right-hand turn. I noticed on a red that they don't even stop for the red, red light to turn right. I think they kind of look to their left to see if somebody might be moving. That's one place, but I'll tell you where it's really bad, it's down there at Ruby Tuesday. Um, I'll be sitting there and it'd be green for me, I'm, I'm going, uh, I'll be sitting there watching them. My light is green. None of us are moving. Because the left-hand turners are coming, still coming through.
They're still going through, right? Okay.
Uh, you know, it's, it's one where you have a problem. And of course, I know you guys are understaffed and stuff. The other thing I wanted to know is what the devil is going on at Meeting on the High School.
Oh, uh, there was a threat that came in. Uh, I can't speak too much on it. I'm not too sure if there's still a pending investigation as far as that goes, but that's why there was so much police presence over there. We were actually part of that as well, so. Um, everything was okay though, um, nobody's hurt, we're all, you know, everybody went home, so, uh, but I, other than that, I can't speak too much on that.
In a, in a case like that, what do you do? Do you have the kids go in the room, in the, in the, their classrooms and lock the doors?
Well, yeah, DOE, as far as I know, handles the lockdown. Uh, we're saturated with police presence, we shall, you know, try and spread ourselves to, uh, appropriators throughout the, the campus to make sure that we, um, have police presence there. Um, but as far as the lockdown goes, I'm, I can't speak really on that as far as how that goes, I wasn't any part of that protocol, but, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other, uh, questions from fellow board members? Okay, going out into the community present here today, any questions for our HPD representative? Okay, seeing none going online, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Okay, thank you very much, Corporal, for that presentation again.
Thank you very much, everyone. Take care, have a good night.
Okay. Okay. Got it. Teresa, great, great point. Uh, question just came up, if we can just move the microphone over and Teresa is gonna do that right now, so it's in better angle of the camera. Okay. Okay, okay, thank you, Teresa. Okay, going on to the next item, Board of Water Supply, Kathleen.
Don't want to have my backs too, that would be rude. Uh, aloha, everybody, nice to see everyone. Um, this is, I'm happy to announce no main breaks in your community over the last month or so, so yay. Uh, we are celebrating Source Protection Week next mo- week, from September twenty-fourth through September thirtieth. And the goal is to bring awareness about the importance of protecting our precious drinking water sources. And things you can do is of course conserve and use water efficiently, check and repair leaks regularly, use only what you need, please don't waste it. Properly dispose of household waste. In other words, when you're changing the oil in your car, please don't dump it on the grass, not a good idea. Protect watersheds. When you're, if you're hiking, please stay on the trail. Remember your shoes, uh, pick up lots of stuff. And that goes out onto the trail, that's how we get the invasive species. And, uh, join a pa- wa- community watershed partnership group. There's two that we help support on this island, uh, Ko'olau Watershed, and then we do out in Yani as well. Uh, I do want to announce, and I hope I will see all of you there, especially you, Teresa. Uh, Imagine a Day Without Water is coming up on October twenty-first. We are going to be celebrating, and there is no reason for any of you not to attend, because it's gonna be at the Freshwater Park in Wauwaa. And we're gonna be having all sorts of city and state agencies. Uh, we did, uh, try to connect with the schools. Unfortunately, we chose the same date as Leileihua's, uh, market, but they know we're doing this. And hopefully people go to the market first and then they'll come out to the freshwater park. If you've not been there, it's beautiful. It's really nice. And the last time we did an event there with Dylan, our, uh, before COVID hit, it was great, it was very well attended, people had a great time. We're gonna have some lunch wagons there. Did we get, uh, Leonard's yet? Oh, sorry, but we will have shave ice and we have a, a great lunch wagon, so I hope you all will join us, learn about, uh, water. Oh, we're gonna be doing genki balls and we're gonna throw them into the lake, so like they're doing with the aloe vera, we're gonna do that too. So we're gonna have some pre-made, the, the kids can throw in, and then we're actually gonna make some, we're gonna have people make that as well, so hope you can all attend, uh, if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Sounds like an informative, yet fun event also.
Will be, I'm sure of it.
Okay, Alice?
Curious question, did I keep watching mine? Well, number one I saw on article five, the sizes, the, the, the pricing.
That's what we're gonna be talking about tonight.
That's what you're gonna be talking about.
Yes. Okay.
The interesting I wanted to know is, it is so interesting that my water is like, um, there's only, only gonna be, when I did the turn the sprinklers on, you know, that stuff. Um, but usually my, my water use is about twenty-five dollars a month.
Mm-hmm. You're a low water user, congratulations. Yeah.
But the problem is, is that my sewer bill is.
I can't help you with that, Alice. I, we don't do sewer. Uh, I don't know if the, uh, I, I, I know, uh, uh, Councilmember Aquino's gentleman, he's can take that question back on sewers.
And then the, the thing with, I remember is that we, that the sewer charge went on, and I believe that was under making animal.
Yeah.
And that it was gonna be for new facilities or upgrading or.
They're under a consent decree. They got nailed by the EPA a number of years ago, and so the Environmental Services Department does have to do a lot of upgrades. I, I'm not as familiar with what they're doing, I just know that they're under consent order to spend the money. I don't know if they're looking at a raise, and again, I, we don't handle that, so you'd have to ask, uh, the mayor's rep or your council member.
Thinking of asking if there are any of these lights at all.
I can't, I can't help you with the sewer. Sorry, I apologize.
Okay, any other questions from fellow board members? Okay, turning to the community present, any questions for our Board of Water Supply rep? Okay, on, online, virtually, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Okay, Kathleen, thank you very much for your report. Next, our military representative. Okay, Colonel Antolos, Dan, welcome back.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everybody. Lieutenant Colonel Dan Antolos, uh, military representative. Uh, the US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, at Mililani High School, beginning at eight thirty AM and ending at two PM. This is open to the public. There will be job officers and provisional, uh, job offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. Click on the employment banner to learn of openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are welcome and should bring two references, uh, proof of ID, social security card, resume or application. There are opportunities in business operations like golf, bowling, food service and many more. The Child Use Services, or CYS, will have openings to consider. For those who work in CYS, there are a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to all recreation facilities, discounted childcare, training and commissary and PX privileges. If you are interested in working with children, we have a position for you. Come on out and see what available employment opportunities await. Twenty-fifth ID will execute JPMRC or the Joint Pacific Multinational Radiance Center twenty-four dash zero one in coordination with the Joint Pacific Multinational Radiance Center and the one ninety, ninety-six Infantry Brigade from October to November twenty twenty-three to prepare and validate the division's ability to deploy, fight and win in combat operations across the Indo-Pacific AOR. The initial forecast, forecast is for about six hundred foreign participants from Taiwan, New Zealand, Indonesia, the Philippines and the UK, which is an increase from last year. Please be aware there may be an increase in traffic and noise and more details will follow. The Army Garrison has published its September training advisory. Any questions or to be added to the distribution list, please call the community concern line at eight zero eight six five six three four eight seven, and we appreciate your understanding and patience. Uh, the, for the remainder of September, the Army in Hawaii will continue training in the East Range area with helicopter training, day only through the twenty-first of September. Blank fire training, day only through the twenty-ninth of September, and demolitions, day only through the, on the twenty-second of September. Additionally, on Schofield barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training from the twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth of September, encompassing battalion-sized live-fire exercises with small arms, heavy machine guns and indirect fires. If you want to be added to the training advisory list server, email please at USAG dot Hawaii dot COMREL at army dot mil. Late October through the first two weeks of November, the Joint Pacific Multi-Renaish Center will conduct its annual large-scale exercises I mentioned earlier. This will involve an increase in the aircraft, planes and helicopters in and around the Oahu communities. Details will be published separately. Subject to anybody's questions.
Okay, Colonel Antolos, great report. Uh, turning to fellow board members, any questions for our military representative? Okay, turning to our, uh, community present, any questions? Okay, and online, any questions? Okay, okay, Dan, thank you very much for that report, and again, welcome back again. Great job. Okay, moving on to next item. Okay, this is titled Filling of Board Vacancy. And, you know, out of our, uh, maximum nine-member board, we have eight positions that are filled, leaving one vacancy. Uh, at this time, and the way that this process will work is if there's anybody interested in the community and you have to live within the community of Mililani Malka or Launani Valley, uh, once you show that you're interested, Dylan will have to verify your residence. Then we will ask you if you're interested to just, uh, say a little bit about yourself. And then after that, a board member has to nominate you and then vote. Um, so at this time, um, as I turn to the community, both online and in person, is there anybody interested in serving on this Mililani Malka and Launani Neighborhood Board? And please don't all jump at once, you know, it is a six-figure income, it's all zeros though, nothing in front of it. And unlike the city council, we don't get a sixty four percent, uh, yeah, we don't get a sixty-four percent pay raise. Anyone interested, please? Okay, nothing online, okay? Okay, please think about it, we're a great group. When Dean runs the meetings, they go fast. Friendly bunch of people. Okay, with that, um, I guess Dylan, we're just gonna have to defer to the next meeting. Please tell all your friends who are interested in serving. Okay, with, I'm sorry, any questions or comments from fellow board members? Okay, okay, moving along to board business. We have a presentation today from our Board of Water Supply. Uh, it's titled Proposed Five-Year Rate Increase. Oh, that sounds like fun, okay. And we have Raylene to do it, okay? I mean, I was told that it's a two-and-a-half-hour presentation that you're gonna cut down to about ten minutes or so, but take as long as you need. Okay, Raylene, you're up.
Yes, uh, Raylen, not for actually, for the water supply, and thank you for having me. Um, you know, in respect of your time, I'm gonna keep this brief, so if you can page them to the next slide. So it does take a large and complex system to deliver water to your home every day. We serve on average a hundred forty-five million gallons of water to about a million people. Next slide, please. Um, as Kathleen kind of talked about, we are semi-autonomous agency, so our, uh, all of our operations are funded by our rate fares. Uh, we receive no money from property taxes, nor from sewer fees. It is all on the water rates. Um, these rates apply only to water, so we're only talking tonight about the water portion of the bill, not the sewer. Uh, next slide, please. So all of the money from water rates goes to fund our operations, um, and our capital projects. About a third of it is going to investments in the system, so there's our capital improvement projects. Um, and another third is going to the O and M part of maintain, or just preparing the daily operations of the Board of Water Supply. And the last third is for our employees and electricity. That's about the breakdown of where every one of the dollars go. Um, next slide, please. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, that was the last five-year rate period. We invested nearly seven hundred seventy million dollars, um, in about five hundred projects over that period. Next slide, please. But as we know, that twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three period, um, I mean, COVID caused changes for all of us here, I mean, board included. Um, and it set into motion of many other impacts. Next slide, please. So I think we all know this, but inflation has risen drastically over the last, um, five years. And we did set rates over a five-year period, but inflation greatly outpaced our rate setting for the last five years by about at least eight percent. We lost about eight percent of purchasing power, so while we were increasing those rates, inflation was far outcompensating the revenues we were bringing in. Next slide, please. Um, one of our biggest costs, I mentioned, a part of like our employee salary plus electricity is about a third of where all of the money at the Board of Water Supply goes. Our, um, reduction or our electricity consumption is on a downward trend, that's a purple line on the screen. But, um, that has unfortunately not impacted, um, or we're not seeing a reduction in cost, that is, continues to rise. Uh, last year we spent about thirty-three million dollars in electricity and it was about twenty percent over our forecasting, but next slide. So there's also the challenge of Red Hill that we are dealing with. It does require a lot, a number of large investments in our facilities in the form of monitoring wells and exploratory wells with the eventual need to replace approximately seventeen and a half million gallons of potable water per day, so we've got to find those new sources. The full impacts though of Red Hill and how we'll deal with this going further, uh, into the future are still unknown. Next slide. But what have we been doing? Um, you know, we've taken a lot of action over the last five years, we've had to, um, to tighten our belts, right? Our, our rate increases, we're not keeping pace with inflation, so we, we've done a number of things. Um, first and foremost, we chose not to pass on that increase in electricity burden to our customers. So we absorbed that, um, we did that by deferring equipment purchases, vehicle. So we absorbed that. Um, we did that by deferring equipment purchases, vehicle replacements, and we've pushed out, um, less critical projects on our capital improvement schedule. But, um, and despite, um, high inflation that we're facing still, we were able to keep this year's operations and maintenance budget the same as last. Next slide. So, um, setting water rates is a balancing act. Um, we have to make investments in the system to maintain it, repair it, replace components of it, um, to keep it functioning, but we need to balance rate affordability on the other side. Next slide. So these rate increases that we're talking about will fund, um, will raise about an additional five hundred fifty million dollars over the next five and a half years. Um, it will continue to fund our operations in the kind of pie chart breakdown that we talked about, but it's also gonna fund about over a million dollars or a billion, sorry, about a billion dollars in capital investments, um, over the next five years into the system. Next slide. So, um, just a breakdown of our customer classes. Um, single-family residential is ninety-five, or I'm sorry, ninety percent of our customer base. They use about a third of the water, um, that we deliver, produce and deliver every day. Um, but most importantly about that, um, they are paying at this point, based on this rate schedule and the prior ninety-five percent of the cost to serve single-family residential unit. Um, that difference is made up by our non-residential customers. We use their businesses, hotels, um, government. Um, they make up only five percent of our customer base, but they use also about a third of the water that we produce every day. Um, but they are paying above their cost of service. So, next slide. So, uh, this is the proposal for, um, the increase of, of water rates starting January first, twenty twenty-four, um, and increasing every July first. After that, through July first of twenty twenty-three. Um, in respect of your time, I'm gonna skip over all the parts on how to calculate your bill. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but give it to that last slide. We are accepting, sorry, we're accepting feedback, um, on these rate increases. Uh, the board, seven-member board of the Board of Water Supply makes the ultimate decision on adopting rate schedules. Um, we are accepting feedback through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and we look forward to hearing from you and answering any questions.
Okay, Raylene, thank you very much. Well, that was, that was terrific. Uh, turning to the board, any questions for the Board of Water Supply?
I have a question.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you for the presentation. I noticed on one of the slides here, you mentioned about cost recovery from the Navy for Red Hill. Do you want to take a moment and elaborate upon that?
Uh, well, I mean, that's, at this point, we received zero dollars, no recovery from the, um, military or D O D or the Navy for any of the changes that we've had to make to system operations or any of the investments we are making to, um, deal with the contamination event. Um, and it's uncertain, um, at this point if we will ever see any cost recovery on that. Our total cost in dealing with this at this point. At this point, um, we are in the process of drilling monitoring wells and exploratory wells. So those monitoring wells are gonna tell us about that contamination plume so that we can make decisions on which sources are most threatened by this or need to come offline. Um, the exploratory wells are gonna tell us where there is potable water that we can drill a new source and bring that into the system. So that's where we're at on the C I P kind of investments that we need. So that's why we have to also say we, it's undetermined. We have to find the water to build the new stations, bring that into the system.
This is the end of what Raylene had to say. Uh, didn't she do great? Yay. Yeah, we were great. Seven. Um, we, we haven't, though, not been asking for money, just so you know. We've had extensive conversations. And actually, Raylene's being very modest because she's been in the middle and the thick of all of this. Uh, we've been talking with our congressional delegation. We've been talking with our state, and as some of you may be aware, the state did give us some funding that we're working on, that Raylene's working on securing for us right now. We also, uh, thank our council members. They gave us some funding. All of that came from the CARES Act, the Build Better Act, things like that to help us through this. But we are, we will pursue, we may be made whole at, with all of the tools at our disposal. So we're not going to just walk away and say, oh, well, they said no. So we will be actively pursuing this. And, and again, we just don't know how much the final tab will be, but we don't think it's fair either that the rate payer should have to bear the entire brunt of this, and, uh, we do make it clear. Thank you.
Okay, Alice?
Great, thank you.
Steve, are you through?
Kathleen, I wanted, uh, to know, is, is there any possibility that those three wells, I think it's three wells, there were polluted? Is there any possibility in the future that, that they might be?
Don't know. We wish we could tell you yes, but we really don't know. That's what the monitoring wells were hope of says. You know, once we get them in and we're drilling, what, five or six? Yeah, about five. And hopefully that will allow us to see where the plume is going. And if we're not finding anything, then that will help us. But we need data. We don't have the data outside of what the Navy on their facilities. And we do have some monitoring wells, just not enough, and that will help us. Oh, uh, one thing I do want to add before I forget and, uh, that we didn't mention was, uh, we have two programs that we're doing also, uh, to help our customers. One is a meter waiver for farmers, new farmers. So we really want to encourage and support the state and the city's food security and sustainability. So if a new farmer comes in, we will waive what we call the installation hookup fees. Uh, the second thing we're doing is we've been doing a lot of conservation programs with the consultant Honeywell. We've been doing direct installs in senior housing and, uh, affordable housing. And we want to expand that program to Capuna that live on their own, that are independent, but sometimes they don't care where the toilet's running. And a runny toilet can really add up. I, I'm a victim of a runny toilet and got a hundred-dollar water bill because of it. So we're gonna be working with St. Francis and the city's elderly services on this program to go into seniors' homes and to do a wa, what we call a water audit and to help them change out fixtures and things like that so their water bill doesn't get out of control and to identify any problems they may have. So, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if that one's, when?
Sure.
I'm having a brain fade. Uh, your, uh, was it Stanley? Stanley, the, the guy that was out there, he was out there uh, on this whole issue with Red Hill. Uh, I hope he's gotten accommodation or something, and I'm having a great urting. Okay. I could not remember his name, but boy, he was out there. I don't know how much time he spent, uh, but he was everywhere. I'll steal it.
Okay, thank you, Alice. Teresa?
Um, does the Board of Water Supply keep, um, I guess a list of freshwater springs that are on private property? Water be smoking.
Okay, any other questions from fellow board members? Steve?
Closing comment. Thank you so much. The Board of Water Supply has just done such an outstanding job. And Chief Engineer Law is legendary. And we did talk with our congressional delegation early on about this. And it was expected the Navy to pick up the bill for cleanup contamination and perhaps re-drilling the three new locations. So, um, know that you have the support of the community, and we just thank you so much for all you're doing for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, turning to our community, um, present or online, any questions for the Board of Water Supply? Okay, Mar Nut, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, for those following along on the agenda, we are now at agenda item number seven, and that is titled Resident or Community Concerns. Uh, at this point, again, turning out, uh, to the community, present and online, if you have any concerns that you would like to bring up, um, at this time. Okay, we have nothing online. Any residents, okay, any from fellow board members? Okay, barring none, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our elected officials, uh, the office of the governor. Do we have Melanie? Okay, got it. Okay, thanks, Dylan. Uh, no representative from the office of the governor, uh, Office of, uh, Congress, uh, Congressman Ed Case. I see Nestor online.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Mr. Chairman, I understand in the August minutes that you did receive a report, third-quarter report for the neighborhood boards from Congressman Case, but I do want to go over a couple of highlights. There are deadlines that are coming up. I'd like to share them with you. One of them is the Annual Congressional App Challenge. Uh, we want to welcome, uh, students that are middle and high school, uh, to submit their app so that, uh, they can see what, uh, share with us what, uh, they're capable of doing. These are students that must be in middle or high school on November first, twenty twenty-three. Students must either reside or attend school in the First Congressional District of Hawaii. And students can compete as individuals or in teams of up to four students, in which at least two students must reside or attend school in the district. Now, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't recall seeing any, uh, submittals of apps from schools in the Mililani complex in the three years, I think, that we've done this, uh, contest. So I like to see, uh, students in that complex to submit their apps so that, uh, they can be judged alongside all the other schools in the First Congressional District. Again, the deadline is November first. For more information, you can call our office here in Honolulu at eight oh eight six five zero six six eight eight. Chairman, another deadline that's coming up. These are young men and women who would like to see whether or not they can get a nomination from Congressman Ed Case to attend one of our four service academies, military academies, the Naval Academy, Air Force Academy, the Merchant Marine Academy, and of course, West Point for the Army. Um, applications must be received by the Honolulu office no later than Friday, October thirteenth. October thirteenth. So if, uh, young men and women who would like to attend any one of those four service academies uh, must submit an application, again, call our office, eight oh eight six five zero six six eight eight for more information on how to apply for a service academy nomination. Chairman, members of the board, also the most important deadline that is coming up very quickly. The end of the month, the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Congressman Ed Case, as well as the rest of the congressional delegation, very busy for the next eleven days to work on a number of things. They're juggling several balls in the air. Uh, chief is the, uh, twelve appropriations measures that must be done in order to fund the federal government at the, at the beginning of the new fiscal year that begins in August, October first, fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Those twelve bills are still a work in progress. If that doesn't happen, it always comes down to what's called a continuing resolution to continue to fund the federal government um, starting October first. That is also still a work in progress. And the other ball that's juggling in the air is whether or not we can get a supplemental emergency measure passed. This is, of course, very critical for family and friends on Maui. Because, uh, in that emergency supplemental is the sixteen billion dollars the president is calling for, uh, for the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Disaster Recovery Fund to help the people of Maui, as well as for, uh, all the other areas that have been affected by disasters, again, most notably recently Florida, and we got through that hurricane. So a number of, uh, balls that are being juggled in the next eleven days, Congressman Case and the rest of the congressional delegation, as they explained in the editorial that appeared in the Sunday Star advertiser just a couple of days ago, what they've been trying to do to help, uh, the people of Maui, uh, to recover from the wildfires. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, open to any questions, uh, from you and from the community?
Okay, first, turning to fellow board members, any questions for Mr. Garcia? Okay, uh, turning to the community present here, any questions? Are none? Okay, online, any questions? Okay, Mr. Garcia, thank you very much, uh, again, for your update and report. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Steve. Oh, okay, you're just waving. Got it. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving along. Office of, uh, Mayor Rick Blangiardi, do we have a representative, whether it's Carrie or representative? Let's see, Carrie?
Hi, good evening, uh, everyone, D B board members, Carrie Castle, representing Mayor Rick Blangiardi's administration. I'm Deputy Director with Budget and Fiscal Services. Um, I want to thank Dylan for putting the, um, link to the mayor's newsletter already, uh, in the chat, so appreciate that, Dylan. Um, one item to highlight, uh, uh, as far as accomplishments for, um, that the mayor and team was able to do in the month of August. So, um, a new lifeguard, lifeguard tower was, um, erected at Kahe Point Beach Park. I guess this is also known as Electric Beach. And this was the first, uh, installation, uh, new installation of a, um, lifeguard tower in eleven years. So that's, you know, that's quite a long time before, um, one was finally, uh, installed. So Mayor and his team are happy to report that. Um, in the, I believe, in the July, um, meeting, I reported that there are a couple of uh, real property tax, uh, bills that the mayor signed into law. Both helped to lower the homeowner's, uh, real property tax, uh, real property tax. The first one was, uh, Bill Forty. And what this, uh, bill does is it increased the homeowner's exemption uh, for those that are under sixty-five. Um, the increase went from, or the homeowner's exemption went from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And for those taxpayers that are over sixty, sixty-five and over, the homeowner's exemption was increased, um, from a hundred forty thousand dollars to a hundred sixty thousand dollars. Um, additionally, there was a, there is Bill Thirty-seven, which is a real property tax credit for those, uh, taxpayers, homeowners, whose, um, total gross income, uh, is, uh, does not exceed eighty thousand dollars. So what, uh, the, the taxpayers that qualify for this credit is that if you're, uh, those title holders whose combined gross income, um, does not exceed eighty thousand dollars, um, there's a three percent tax credit that, uh, will apply to reduce your real property tax. So, um, you take three percent of the up to eighty thousand dollars, there's a potential maximum of twenty-four hundred dollars in real property tax that one could be eligible, uh, eligible for. So that would be the maximum that someone who qualifies at the eighty thousand dollar gross income would have to pay. Um, I'm bringing these, um, two items to everyone's attention because, um, there is, uh, some forms, if you qualify, that need to be filed, um, by October second, which is right around the corner. Uh, normally, these, uh, forms would be due on September thirtieth. But since the thirtieth lands on a Saturday this year, um, taxpayers have till Monday, October second, to file these, um, these forms, uh, to get the exemption. So, uh, that's all I have, uh, for this evening. Uh, I'll take questions if there are any.
Okay, from our fellow board members, any questions for our mayor's rep? Alice?
Carrie, um, that's only if you're not on the exemption already, right?
Correct. That's right. Yeah, if you already get it, you, there's nothing that you need to do.
Okay, anything else on any other board members? Hey, going to the community, any questions for our mayor's rep? Anybody online? Okay, Carrie, thank you very much for your report. Uh, moving on, that, that's our office of council member, Val Okimoto's office, Jamie.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, my name is Jamie Chabell from the Office of Councilmember Val Okimoto, good evening. Councilmember just returned from Japan, and I believe on yesterday, a sister city relationship with a town called Sakai Machi outside of Tokyo. So the mayor took them around the town, they're doing some unique like tiny home kind of concepts in there, using containerized types of like shipping containers for housing in that town, and then some other sister city related functions. At the council meeting last week, there was, with the previous council meeting, there is this large debate on the residential parking zone program that some residents in Kameki Valley really, really want for their community. That was pushed back to committee and it will be back on the full council meeting next month. Not sure if I mentioned the last time I was here, but Councilmember Okimoto did introduce Bill forty-eight, which proposes a property tax cap on the assessments, no more than two percent. Similar to what California and I believe Portland have in place. But this one is aimed specifically for our senior citizens, in addition to the home exemptions and the property tax credits that Carrie mentioned. Other than that, I will stand on our written report pending any question.
Okay, turning to fellow board members, any questions for Councilmember Val Okimoto's office? None, okay, to the community, any questions? Okay, and turning online, no questions. Okay, Jamie, thank you very much for your report. Next, Office of Councilmember District Two Matt Wires office, do we have a, the council member or representative online? Okay, Kelly, we can't quite hear you.
How about now, can you hear me now?
Yep, much better.
Okay, um, thank you for having me, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires office. Just a couple legislative updates, Councilmember introduced Bill fifty-five, which incentivizes the use of gray water for new housing projects. It's currently awaiting its first reading and should be on the agenda for the next full council meeting, I believe that's going to be on October fourth. Bill forty-six, which bans the flavored tobacco products, including vaping and electronic smoking devices. This bill has passed out of committee and should be up for final reading at the next full council. Bill forty-seven, which allows putting manufactured compostable materials into the green waste bins, should be up for second reading at the next full council as well. Bill forty-six and forty-seven are assigned to the Housing Sustainability and Health Committee, and Bill fifty-five is assigned to the Zoning Committee. And that's all I have for tonight. If anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Okay, from fellow board members, Steve.
Kelly, thank you very much for that report. Would you be so kind to elaborate a little bit more on Bill forty-six?
Bill forty-six, the flavored tobacco, that one? So basically what it is, is just going to enhance the current laws that are in place. I can't remember exactly when, but I know the, I believe it was a state that had banned flavored, I guess additives in cigarettes, so this will just include vaping on electronic tobacco products, flavored vaping and electronic products.
Thank you, when is that coming to a vote?
Yeah, for the next full council, so October, it should be, it hasn't been agendized yet, so I don't want to commit, but I don't see why it wouldn't be for October, October fourth.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, turning to other board members, any questions? Okay, turning to the community, any questions? And online, any questions for Kelly? Okay, Kelly, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, turning to Office of Senator De La Cruz's office, do we have the Senator or David online?
Aloha, my name is Malcolm. Hello, members of the board and the community, my name is Malcolm, I work with Senator De La Cruz. I just dropped a link to the newsletter that I wanted to speak about today in the chat. So if you folks want to follow along, please click on that link. So if you aren't familiar already, our office has a newsletter. Recently, we've been coming out with new ones more frequently, so if you'd like to subscribe, please enter your email in the chat and I can add those to our email list. So this newsletter in particular, it's called Creating Pathways That Keep Our Graduates Living and Working Here at Home. We all know that Hawaii has a really bad brain drain problem, so Senator has a four-pronged approach to addressing that problem. The first one is creating economically relevant and aligned career technical education pathways. Pretty much what that means is working with the DOE and the community colleges to create classes and programs within the schools that would allow students to take courses that would help them build skills in areas like IT, healthcare, and emergency, emergency, emerging industries like ag tech and entrepreneurship. The second strategy is repricing our salaries to combat private sector salaries. Of course, we have a lot of hard to fill positions, things like engineers are really hard to find. So the state is working to, as much as it can, increase those salaries to fill those positions. Strategy three is the Halei Mua internship program, which launched last year in twenty twenty-two. This upcoming legislative session, the state is trying to expand the program to allow the state to place interns into non-state agencies. So to work for private companies like hotels, for example. And then lastly, those who participate in the state internship will be eligible for up to ten thousand dollars in loan forgiveness if they work for the state for five years. And that is the newsletter, and I am available for any questions.
Okay, turning to fellow board members, any questions? Okay, none to the community, any questions? Okay, and then online, any questions? Okay, Malcolm, thank you very much for joining us. I don't know if this is just coincidence, but you know, when it's the staffer that speaks to you, Jamie, Kelly, the reports tend to be a lot shorter versus the elected official. Just kidding. Turning next, turning to Representative Matsumoto's office, Lauren? Or representative? Okay, from Dylan, we don't have Representative here today, but the report was sent and online, okay? So moving next to Officer, Office of Representative Perusso's office, Amy.
Aloha.
Okay, Amy, take as long as you want.
Um, I'm gonna be brief, because I just want to update you on the most recent activities of our office. So obviously, we've been really concerned both about the events recently in Lahaina, about recovery and restoration of Lahaina, and also the implications of those same conditions in our neighboring communities. So simultaneously working on issues surrounding Lahaina and also working on disaster preparedness in our community. And to that end, I want to make sure that everybody knows that we have a community meeting, a town hall focusing on community resilience with Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke and the Chair of the Health Committee, Della Albaladi, on October fifth, and that's going to be at Kaala Elementary. And I invite all community members to attend. I'll be sending our report in for the minutes, you can see that, but the other pieces, I wanted to show that I'll be working on two working groups that have been established by the House with respect to the Lahaina situation. So the intent of the committees or the working groups is to gather information that we will use to shape legislative priorities. And by gathering information, we're also planning to go out to the affected communities and do listening sessions and issue a draft report by early November, get community feedback in public settings, and then have a final report by December with our legislative recommendations. So both these parallel processes are local community process and then the state level process for disaster recovery and mitigation are happening pretty much at the same time, so please track both of those and hopefully please participate in the town hall, and I am open for questions.
Okay, turning to fellow board members, any questions for Representative Perusso, Teresa?
Amy, what time was the town hall resilience meeting at Kaala?
It's going to be from six to seven thirty, and we're going to be serving light pupu, and that's going, oh, sorry, so that's October fifth, right? The first one is October fourth in Waialua, the second one is in Kaala on October fifth, and the Lelehua culinary program will be providing us with locally sourced pupu. So I'm looking forward to that part especially.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from former, or from board members, I'm sorry? Okay, to the community, any questions? Okay, and online, any questions for Representative Perusso? Okay, Amy, thank you very much for your update, okay?
Thank you.
And our last elected official here in person, District Thirty-seven, Representative Lachica, Trish.
Good evening, Chair members, Representative Lachica, Mililani in Waipio. Just wanted to share some report, my report. In the newsletter, you'll see some highlights, the front page is taken from my recent trip to the Philippines where I was one of fifteen delegates that got to be part of the Filipino Young Leaders Program, so I'm wearing a traditional terno, which is a outfit. Representative Perusso had already shared some highlights on the interim working groups, just wanted to add that I'm part of the Jobs and Business Working Group to restart economic activity and evaluate unemployment, and then schools to really address the displaced students and get the schools to reopen. And then as you know, we've been pretty, our office has been pretty vocal about the cancellation of the school bus services here in Oahu as it affects the schools in my district and Pearl City High School in particular. And we, thanks to the community's advocacy and the Department of Education's, you know, willingness to work with us, we were able to get one bus route for Corridge. And so students at least from Corridge, which is furthest away from the high school, now have access to a school bus. So just some highlights, you'll see some pictures there, just, it was a life-changing opportunity as a Filipina legislator. I just got back last weekend, so slightly still jet lagged, but it's just been wonderful to just kind of reconnect with, reconnect with a lot of the leaders there and then bridge a lot of potential projects here with our community. On the constituent services, so we did work with the US Army Garrison actually today, over the last month. It's not part of this neighborhood board, but the Kipapagolch encampment, which is in my district. And so we've been working with them closely, they did clear the camp encampment this morning. However, they're currently working on removal of debris and trash. So the encampment there has grown significantly, they have been able to have electrical and water hookups, and they've also accessed the tunnels and really gone into the valley. And so that was necessary for the Army Garrison to get involved, so thank you so much for that work. We are getting a lot of calls on e-bikes, so just as a reminder, nobody under the age of fifteen is legally allowed to operate an electric bike. And they are required to get it registered with the city and county of Honolulu. If it is, you are, you need to be eighteen years old to be able to register the bike. But as long as there's a, the bike is registered within, to anyone within the household, anyone between fifteen and eighteen with a helmet can operate. So if you're concerned on anyone's safety, HPD just says, just call nine one one and non, you know, non-emergency services call. Um, we did have a resident from Lonani, yeah, Lonani Valley, but it was really about, you know, I don't even remember the curb side services at Zipi, that was at the Mililani Town Center. So we, it's back, still back, it was back in March, but in June, we were able, Mililani Town Center Zipi is unable to get the curb side reinstated because they have limited parking available and then lack of staffing, what was happening was people were parking really in different spots and it's hard for them to look for the folks. So what they did do is because they have a standalone building at the Ka'uka location, you know, across from McDonald's, they were able to put five stalls there, so thanks, we like sitting there. And then shameless plug, but we did welcome a new fur baby to my household, so it's these last two pictures. Lily is our newest family member. And then finally, October is Filipino American History Month, so just wanted to share my husband's favorite adobo recipe in the back, so please celebrate, support some Filipino businesses and eat some Filipino food. Aloha, that concludes my report.
Okay, from board members, any questions for Representative Lachica?
Oh, well, maybe next month, or no, actually, no, Christmas, Christmas, we're planning something, so stay tuned for that.
Okay, from the community or online, any questions? All right, Trish, thank you very much, great update. Okay, moving along, the approval of our board minutes, and then turning to board members here, any corrections, additions, clarifications that we need to address? Okay, barring none, the minutes are approved, going into reports now, committee reports, Patsy T. Mint, Central Oahu Regional Park. No update, okay, education, Steve.
Great, thank you, Dylan, you want to share? Great, thank you so much. I'm going to be sharing on Mililani Middle School, the education committee report as the chair. As Dylan is showing on the screen, the top is the administration with Principal Tomashuro, Assistant Principal Nakasone, Assistant Principal Horusman, Assistant Principal, Mrs. Horobata, and also Assistant Principal, Mrs. Tatayama, and Assistant Principal, Mrs. Pang. We so appreciate all the work they've done for us and our students in the school. On the front there, we have the Blazer calendar, as you notice on the calendar, the eighteenth started the second quarter for bus applications. They're now online, you can go up to the DOE website and apply. And then on the twenty-third is the, excuse me. Okay, on, the eighteenth is the start of the bus applications online, twenty-third, Mililani Middle School volleyball is at Mililani High School. The thirtieth is volleyball at Aia High School. And then coming down at the bottom there, on the left-hand corner, the blue, that is a PTSO fundraiser for a book fair. Then in the center is STEM Camp, STEM Camp, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Camp, that's going to be great, it's October ninth through thirteenth. And on the right-hand side there, you'll see the Community Resource Fair, which is at the Mililani Town Center on October thirty-first, pardon me, twenty-first, from ten AM to one PM. Let's go to next page, this was really good, I'm glad that I was able to share this, especially since Representative Matsumoto is not here. This is a special invite to anyone in the community, are you here?
I was just, just signed on, I apologize for being late.
Yay, okay, well, do you want to share this? You have the floor.
I apologize for being late, I was just coming out of another meeting. I thank you for sharing, this was my main thing that I wanted to share, we're doing a Capitol talking tour on October eleventh from ten AM to twelve noon, and this is during fall break, so all the students can also come out, so this is a family-friendly event, we'd love to have everybody come. We're going to do a tour and then talk, learn We're going to do a tour and then talk, learn about the legislative process um, and learn about the state Capitol and its history. So sorry to interrupt your report. I apologize for missing mine, but this was the main thing that I wanted to talk about today. And you can RSVP at RepMatsumoto.com. And I believe Dylan has the flyer to share with everybody as well.
Great, go ahead and Dylan, come down the next portion. Representative Matsumoto, I like your, your bullet points here, especially when it says that you're going to have, after the tour, you're going to have a special talk story with the students and also with snacks. I'm sure that with light refreshments. So that's a big buy-in. So thank you very much for doing that. Um, Lauren, is there any other items you want to share on this?
Um, I think just to mention that it's, uh, not just for kids, it's for everybody. And, um, we're really looking forward to it. We do have, uh, seventy people RSVP'd already, and we'd love to have more. So we'd love to see everybody out at the Capitol. Um, I think it's important to learn about the process and how you can get involved, especially for the twenty twenty-four session coming up.
Great, thank you. Your, uh, your office manager had called me and I told, I left a message with you this last week that if you needed assistance with, um, guidance, students, I'd be glad to make myself available. So I am going to forward this on to the schools in this area and also to the board chairs. And, uh, thank you very much. That concludes my report. Oh, the, I'm sorry, the last page of my report Dylan is showing, that is the middle school, uh, calendar. This is also available up on the, uh, Midlani, uh, middle school website. If you have any questions with anything concerning Middle, Middleani Middle School, you may call them at eight oh eight six two seven nine thousand. R online at www.midlanimiddle.k12.hi.us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Again, very organized. Thank you for putting together your report. Oh, okay, uh, turning, uh, back to Representative Matsumoto, uh, would like to give you the floor if, uh, you want to provide any updates, uh, to the board and the community.
Thank you so much. My main report, apologies, and I just have a meeting at eight o'clock, and you guys move very quickly this evening. Um, so my main
Okay, Lauren, you're breaking in and out.
Okay. I will save everything for my, for next month.
Okay, got it. Thanks, Lauren. Okay, turning, uh, to military and civil defense, I have no report. Uh, moving on, parks and recreation. Okay, no report, uh, planning, permitting and zoning statin. Okay, no report. Okay, uh, transportation dean's not here. Recognition and service awards, Alice?
Um, Mr. Chair, um, Mililani High School just had a fiftieth anniversary. I think it would be nice of us as a neighborhood board to send perhaps a letter of congratulations to the principal and uh, whoever could get it. Uh, there was a nice article in The Voice tonight, and, um, Lauren was there, I think, uh, Lachica was there. Yes, yes, we were, weren't you? And, um, Marilyn Lee was there and, um, I'm forgetting. Anyway, it would be a nice thing for us to recognize the Mililani High School, and they have evidently a football team that's pretty good.
Hey, thank you, Alice. I'll be sure to pass that on to Chair Hazama.
Okay, Chair?
Yes, Dylan?
Uh, that is great to note. Um, I'd also like to note that this is the fiftieth anniversary for the neighborhood board system as well. So maybe they want to send you guys a letter.
Okay, thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Alice. Okay, uh, any other announcements before we close? Okay, if not, uh, the next Mililani Malka Lonani neighbor, uh, Lonani Valley Neighborhood Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October seventeenth at seven p.m. here as well as online. Chair Hazama should be back at that time. If he isn't, I will call in sick. Just kidding. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Keith.